All right, all right, I'm going to call the Board of Trustees meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone, thank you for being here in person, and for those appearing remotely. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. If we could start things off with a roll call.
Barahona.
Present.
Buena Ventura.
Present.
Chen, not present. Cisneros.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Huza.
Here.
Shelby.
Present.
Soel.
Present.
Stallings.
Present.
Stevens. I believe Trustee Stevens will be joining shortly. Tony.
Present.
Trejo.
Present.
You have a quorum chair.
All right, thank you. Next up on our agenda is a call for public comment. State Bar staff will attempt to call members of the public in the order they appear in the attendee pool. For those of you who are participating via Zoom, you should have a function for virtually raising your hand. It is a hand icon that should appear at the bottom center of your screen. If you wish to address the board, please click on the hand icon now, and State Bar staff will call on you in the order that hands are raised. For those of you who are participating via phone, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. That is the star key, the number nine. In doing so, alert staff you'd like to make comments, and State Bar staff will call on you and open your microphone so you can address the board. For those of you who are participating via notice location, please alert the State Bar staff member present in the room that you would like to make comment. Due to time restrictions, we cannot allow more than three minutes for each speaker. Please note that staff will have an on-screen countdown timer visible to all attendees during the duration of your public comment. The timer's three-minute countdown will begin as soon as you start your comment. The on-screen timer will flash throughout the final 10 seconds. Understand that we have no advanced signup for public comments?
That is correct.
All right, and Madam Secretary, can you identify any members who wish to address the board?
We have Dean Jessica Park who'd like to address the board. Dean Park, you may be able to speak now.
Thank you for this opportunity to make an oral comment. I will be going over a written comment I submitted related to a recommendation in the file posted for Agenda Item 702 regarding Amendment of Section 660.7 and 6046.7 of the Business and Professions Code. To clarify that the Committee of Bar Examiners Oversight applies solely to JD programs whose graduates are eligible to sit for the California Bar Exam. My name is Jessica Park, and I am a member of the Committee of the State Bar Accredited and Registered Law Schools and the Law School Dean at Abraham Lincoln University. Abraham Lincoln University is accredited by the Distance Education Accrediting Commission, which is listed by the U.S. Department of Education as a recognized accrediting agency and is recognized by the Council for Higher Education Accreditation. Our online Juris Doctor program is registered with the Committee of Bar Examiners as an unaccredited distance learning law school, and ALU's authority to grant the JD degree is solely through the Committee of Bar Examiners. I'm in support of the State Bar staff amending Section 660.7 and 6046.7 of the Business and Professions Code for clarity of scope, and I know that is up for recommendation in Item 702. My point to come before you is just, in the March 15th CBE meeting, there was a file distributed, a staff memorandum with discussion on recommendations to amend those two statutes related to non-JD degree programs. And just to be very clear, I am in support of removing the word accredited and adding the words regulated by the Examining Committee that are in those November 2017 drafted proposed amendments, and I make that clear in my written comments as well. This change of terminology is positive, especially for describing institutions like mine which do have institutional accreditation through other entities. However, I just want to bring attention to the board and staff that in the rest of those November 2017 proposed amendments that were discussed by the CBE on March 15th, instead of removing the word unaccredited and replacing that with regulated throughout the text, it begins to only mention accredited law schools as if that's the only category that will be existing, I think, once those proposed amendments are in. So I presented three examples of that that I could see from what was shared from the March 15th meeting, and just want to be sure it's taken to see the full context. Since submitting my comment, I have received responses. I'm very appreciative of those. I would be ready to share a red line. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Any other members who wish to address the board?
We do not have any additional members of the public who'd like to address the board.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now end the public comment section. We will move next to Item 10, which are the minutes. These are approval of January 18 through 19, 2024, open session minutes, approval of February 26, 2024, open session minutes, as well as March 1, 2024, open session minutes. Are there any corrections or modifications to the open session minutes? And if not, oh, yes, Trustee Shelby.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just want to make an edit to the Thursday, January 18 minutes. It states that I wasn't, I was absent, but then it records different votes that I made, and so, thank you. I'm confident I stepped out, but...
Okay, I'll take a look and correct those.
Thank you.
All right. All right, with that understanding, the staff will look at some of those entries. Any other questions or comments? Not may have a motion.
So move.
First by Trustee Shelby, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Trustee Buena Ventura with the second. Madam Secretary, with a roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Chen, not present. Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Huza.
Aye.
Shelby.
Aye.
Stevens, not present. Soel.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
That's 10 ayes, zero nays, minutes are adopted.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Item 30, this is the Chair's Report. Just wanted to let the Board of Trustees know that I had the honor of attending the State of the Judiciary Address. This was delivered on Tuesday by Chief Justice of the California Supreme Court, Patricio Guerrero, to members of both the Senate and the Assembly. Governor Newsom was also in attendance, as well as members of the California Supreme Court and distinguished guests of the Judicial Council. I was struck by the amount of people as I sat up in the gallery, looking down on the work of the Assembly floor, and then everybody involved who was there in attendance, and all of these individuals are working to serve the people of the state of California. And I was impressed on the intersection between the work of the State Bar and how Californians' needs are best served. Chief Guerrero's message to the legislator focused on topics that are currently being addressed by our own board here at the bar, and I was grateful to see that the issues that we are currently grappling with are being contemplated by our parent organization. Chief Guerrero spoke of the civic engagement that the Supreme Court is seeking to have with students, and similarly, I was reminded of the work that we do to impacted communities regarding warning of fraud relating to non-lawyers, our work to provide educational materials on our website to help young practitioners who are grappling with a new career and the very real effects of imposter syndrome. The chief spoke of artificial intelligence and the desire to engage in a careful investigation of the issues surrounding this expanding technology. I was reminded of the work that our body has engaged in to notify our licensees of areas of concern in the use of this technology in the practice of law. And as an organization, I believe that it serves all of California for us to continue to study and engage with this changing technological environment and ensure that we, as a regulator, are fully up to speed on all issues surrounding artificial intelligence. The chief spoke of the care courts and their implementation to help those most vulnerable, and I was again struck with the responsibility that the State Bar has in administering millions of dollars in grant funds and helping Californians with their very real needs. In the chief's speech, there was a focus on technology and the use of courts, use in courts to open access and increase resources available to self-represented litigants, and I could not help but be reminded of the work that the State Bar Court has engaged in to increase the amount of resources on their website to aid self-represented litigants as they navigate State Bar matters. And just in closing, as the bar continues to rebuild the trust of the public and our stakeholders, we do so not because it's just the right thing to do, but also because disruption of the work here at the State Bar will have serious downstream effects on issues that are at the forefront of the legislative agenda and issues in the public eye. Lawyers are necessary for a well-functioning society, and a well-funded judiciary is vital to provide an impartial forum where Californians can reach resolution. Funding the work of the State Bar ensures the public's confidence in the legal system and the civic fabric that holds us together. We, as a board, and myself as an individual, look forward to continuing to make the case for a licensing fee increase and to work with stakeholders to ensure that our vital work continues, all with the goal of protecting the public and ensuring the public's trust in our form of government. That concludes my oral report. Would move on to Item 41, which is our Executive Director's Report.
Chair Stallings, I do apologize for the interruption, just want to note for the record that Trustee Stevens is present now.
Perfect, welcome, and I believe this is Trustee Stevens' first in-person meeting, so glad to have you.
Nice to be here, and apologies for the delay.
No worries.
All right, well, I'm going to take us from the lofty to the mundane or the tactical that I have several different things that I want to alert the board to. First, I want to provide the board with an update on the Cal Palace testing situation that occurred February, with the February Bar Exam. You heard, I think, were reached out to by some test takers, and of course, it made the news, the conditions for students or applicants taking the exam at the Cal Palace really sounded pretty unpleasant with a number of test takers reporting that they were quite cold. And so I wanted to provide the board with a little bit of an update on what we know and what we're doing about it. So there were about 1,300 people that took the exam at the Cal Palace, 600 in what's called a North Hall and 700 in the South Hall. We were told in advance that it can take days to warm up that facility. Any of you guys have been here, no, that's not a surprise, and we did request that the facility begin being heated about three days before the exam. On the first day of the exam, we had about 30 applicants in the South Hall reporting to staff that they were too hot. And so we, to resolve that issue, the heat was turned off. When the heat was turned off, we had applicants in the North Hall reporting that they were too cold, and I think it sounds, at least from their reports that we've heard on social media and the news, that that was, the folks were quite cold for a portion of that day on Day One. By Day Two, at least from the staff that were on-site in both the North and the South Halls, the temperature issues appeared to have been resolved. But nonetheless, this raised quite a bit of concern amongst the test takers, of course, just other kind of feedback about the conditions of that site, the number of restrooms that were available, the lack of eating spaces. They've all reinforced our earlier decision not to, again, test at the Cal Palace, so that's one thing I really want to make sure board members are clear about. With respect to this particular exam, we have asked our psychometrician to do an analysis after the exams are graded but before their release to see if there was a psychometric impact on performance based on this report of Day One, folks being quite cold, and through their brilliance that these psychometric folks have, they are able to do that and assess that, and if there was an impact, we will confer with the Supreme Court, with whom we work very closely on these types of admissions issues, to determine if there should be some accommodation made. So wanted the board to know that, and I'll pause there before I move to a very different topic to see if board members have questions or anything more they'd like to know, yes?
When you say, based on the impact and accommodations that are going to be made, what kind of accommodations do you think they would be thinking of?
Well, in the past, so there have been issues in the past at Bar Exams. Alarms have gone off, I think spaces have flooded. There's been quite a number of issues, and these folks have a repertoire of tools available to them. I don't want to commit to any one of those right now, or even that it's going to occur. It's a bit of a sensitive topic, because as you can imagine, I've heard that the Reddit channels are full of rumors about what we are going to do and sort of pass everybody that took the exam there. That's not the case. There is sort of a finessed approach, and they can do that on a question-by-question basis, depending on what timeframe was impacted by the temperature, for example. So perhaps if any of that kind of remediation activity is recommended, we could work with our General Counsel and schedule a closed session for the board to learn a little bit more about that, as opposed to me sharing details that actually I'm not totally familiar with in an open session.
So who makes the decision on what? Is it the Supreme Court or us, or is it a combination?
That's a good question. I certainly have heard from my liaison at the Supreme Court about this issue, working closely, and know that there is an expectation that we will share this psychometric analysis there. I'm not exactly sure who has the definitive say, but that is who we report to and, of course, has plenary authority over admissions.
Of course, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for the thoroughness in addressing this issue. I know it's really important to the larger community, but it feels like we're taking all the steps necessary to try to address this, so thank you so much, just wanted to appreciate that.
Thank you.
I appreciate this update as well, and what I'd appreciate an update the next time we meet is on the question of accountability and holding the Cal Palace accountable. It is unacceptable that we pay a vendor that doesn't deliver the basics, and so I would appreciate an update on that at a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to my next topic, and this relates to one of the items posted under the Executive Director Report, operational metrics. You've been provided with our 2023 Operational Metrics Report, and I just want to highlight a couple of things. One, we did extensive work last year, including with the board, to reduce and update the metrics. We now have 53 performance metrics spanning the breadth of the organization, and now, thanks to feedback from the board, only five of those don't have performance targets. I think you, Trustee Tony, objected to the idea of a metric without a target, and so we've really reduced the number of metrics without targets. I also want to lift up for the board the fact that if you, you may have noticed in reading the fee increase request, that the portion of the request related to eliminating the forced vacancy rate at the State Bar does refer to our ability to actually achieve our performance objectives. You see in this report that's been posted, I believe we were able to achieve about 60% of our stated metrics. When the auditor came into the State Bar last year and recommended a fee increase for the bar, one of the things the auditor noticed was that our, noted was that our high vacancy rate was impacting our ability to achieve our metrics. Unfortunately, even though the auditor noted that and flagged it as an issue, they did not recommend additional funding for us to fill our vacancies. So that's, I just want you to notice the connection between our performance and our staffing level. I also want to highlight that there are new metrics in last year's report. Those are onboard ethics and conflicts. I highlighted those in the memorandum. This is your compliance with your required Form 700 and 2201 reporting. Wanted to let all of you know that the parallel staff metrics can be found on Page 13 of the posted report. We are performing, we did perform a little bit better than the board, and I hope this next time around, we can achieve the 100% compliance rate for the board, or at least as close as we can. We will publish this report officially as part of the publication of the 2023 State Bar Annual Report. So although it's posted here, it has not yet been formally published. I'll stop there and see if the board has any questions or comments.
I have one, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm looking at Page 2 of the report, and it has a very nice bar chart that reports State Bar Board of Trustees' compliance with filling out Form 700 on a timely manner, and it says 63%. And I think that's an embarrassment for all of us. It reflects poorly on all of us whether we submitted it on time or not as a body. And so here's a little bit better on 2201, but there's no reason that the Board of Trustees should not be 100% at both. So here's what I'm going to recommend, and we'll see if there's objection to this, but the, April 1 is the deadline for the Form 700, so all of us have, April 2, thank you. All of us have time, and all of us have notice, and I would ask that in the Executive Director Report, that in the May meeting, it is reported who complied and who didn't by name. These are public records. The filing of Form 700 is public. It is not privacy or violating. It's an accountability measure that I think will motivate and inspire each of us to comply
Trustee Tony did give me a heads-up about this. I did check with the General Counsel, so there's no legal prohibition on our doing that. I think it's really the will of the board. I don't want to put anyone in an awkward position, including myself, but you hear what one of your fellow colleagues has requested be included in my May Executive Director Report.
Yeah, I think just from my perspective, the Executive Director's Report is your report, and certainly if you want to bring issues up to the board, then that's well within your purview. I know that we've had issues brought up in the past where we've asked Leah to update us, and I just would, you know, in her discretion, not want to remove, say like you will report on issues X, Y, or Z. I think all of us are very attuned to the reporting requirements, the deadline, and I know like all attorneys, sometimes we just wait right up until the very last minute because it just gives us a sense of thrill. I don't know what it is. It's a weird thing that attorneys experience, and, but definitely in the vein of Trustee Tony's comments, would just again invite any of the Board of Trustees, if you've not yet filled out your Form 700 and submitted it in the proper channels, to contact the Office of General Counsel. General Counsel Deftien and her team has been excellent in providing guidance, and so if anybody has any last-minute things pop up, please give them enough time to render the appropriate guidance, so that's my thoughts on that.
Sure. Mr. Chair, if I could just say that, and just maybe also for the general public, I think the staff has really done a great job of keeping us on top of it. They'll send you our emails, they'll send texts, they'll make sure that we don't miss it, and I just, I wanted to compliment staff on that because if it wasn't for you, I think I would have missed many, many deadlines.
So true.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Buena Ventura. I share and echo in staff's gentle prodding.
Just a...
Yes, Trustee Stevens.
If I may, just a quick observation, the staff is wonderful about staying on top of this, and if I understand the data correctly, it shows that the Form 700 was not timely filed, not that it was not filed at all.
That's right.
I want to make sure that that's clear. Having said that, the optics of that number are not good, and so the data shows us that they weren't timely filed, and we need to line up with the timing on all of this, especially given staff's great efforts to help us do it. But I do want the public to be clear that it's not that the trustees aren't complying with the rule, this is about not timely complying, and I think we can do better.
Any other comments on this?
Okay, so my last topic, just moving to a totally different topic, but also ties to our pending fee increase request. I've provided you with an update on the second now cycle of client trust account reporting, and I just wanted to highlight a few things. One, we've had many fewer attorneys reporting their trust accounts on time to the State Bar this cycle, and that may tie in part to challenges that have manifested with respect to the platform that attorneys use to report. But although we've had a fewer, lower percentage of attorneys timely report their client trust accounts, we have had more attorneys in absolute numbers reporting having at least one trust account. So fewer overall, lower percentage complied with the reporting requirement at all, but of those that complied, we have more attorneys reporting that they have a trust account. In particular, I think of particular note, 16% more individual client trust accounts were reported than the last cycle. We've had a slight, very slight decrease in the number of IOTA accounts. I also want to note that we are able to match information about trust accounts that are pooled or shared accounts, that's what is an IOTA account, with parallel information reported from the banks. Last year, we had 15,000 instances where a bank reported a trust account to us, an IOTA account, but there was no matching attorney report. This year, we have 10,000 instances. So if you just think about this overall, we have more attorneys fussing at that they have a trust account or reporting them, and we have fewer instances of mismatch, and I think this is very positive. I think it shows that this program is working, and I think it also speaks to the incredible outreach that literally 1.5 staff have done to follow up on instances of mismatch that first year, because I think there is a sense that the State Bar is actually looking at this information. So I wanted to highlight that for the board. I also wanted to just give you a sense of volume, that together, those pooled accounts, the IOTA accounts and the individual client trust accounts, attorneys report about close to $11 billion as the daily average balance of those accounts, and we believe that there is still significant underreporting, particularly on the individual CTA side, because the banks are not required to report anything to the State Bar about individual client trust accounts. This year, in the fee increase request, we are asking for funding to move to the next phase of CTAP. When the board adopted this initiative, and as a reminder, you did this as a direct response to the Girardi situation, it was always contemplated that first phase was going to be reporting, but the second phase would include compliance reviews and audits. We are seeking in the fee increase request, funding to support compliance reviews and audits, and those would be done on, using a sampling strategy that includes both a risk-based sampling, but also some element of random sampling and some element of sampling based on trust account size, and we have other jurisdictions to look to, to guide us in how to move this forward. We also note in the fee increase request that part of the State Bar's affirmative legislative package, which you will look at again today, is a requirement that banks have to report individual CTA account information to the State Bar, and for both IOTA and individual accounts, that they would have to provide a bar number, because although... Because although we are able to do the matching, the matching is manual and very difficult right now because the banks do not remit a bar number. So this is really interesting data. I really want to applaud this team. It was literally one and a half people doing all of this incredible work, supported, of course, by IT to make it happen and our customer service folks. And to say, you know, I think with only a modest amount of resources, we can be significantly more impactful. The last piece, I'll say, is that in addition to, you know, collecting data and doing heavy regulation, we have launched concurrent with this effort, a lot of training and support for attorneys around how to do trust account reporting. And one of the things that's become very clear is many attorneys simply don't know how to do it. So we have put out a lot of how-to, very practical guidance. We are about to launch, I think I have sitting in my inbox to review, really hands-on workshop where you take your ledger and you watch the video and you actually learn how you're supposed to fill in what. So that is just something that I want to make sure the board is aware of, that this has gone hand in hand with a very significant investment in training and TA for lawyers. And that concludes my ED report.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Well, I'm sorry, any questions on the CTA piece, client trust account?
I had a question, but it doesn't relate to that, so I'm not sure if it's appropriate or not.
Go ahead.
So I read a couple of weeks ago in the news that the legislature was considering requiring the state bar to regulate ADR providers. And putting to one side whether or not that's a good idea, it concerned me that the bar now is being asked to come up with regulatory scheme, brand new regulatory scheme for these entities and the cost of that and what that might look like on the budget. Might not be appropriate to talk about it now, but it's certainly, I think, something that we should be thinking about and perhaps chatting about at some point over the next two days. So I defer to the chair and the vice chair as to, you know, when we want to take that up. But it concerned me greatly that our regulatory obligations may be increasing very significantly. So.
Okay, so we do have on the agenda for this meeting an update on the legislative proposals, both state bar affirmative and responsive. I've just checked with staff, this item isn't there because it came in later. But happy to, you know, I will at least just report that we certainly have been in communication with Senator Umberg's office. And I I would not be inclined to have us take anything on that we can't support. And I think the board chair, the board feels the same way. But there is a provision in that bill, as it's currently written, to enable the state bar to charge for any related services. So that's what I'll have to say about it now, and we can figure out with our GC, who's probably cautioning me now, whether or not we can talk about it a bit more extensively when the legislative item is up on the agenda.
Thank you, trustee Good for raising that. Certainly, there's been, I've been involved in several conversations about that as well. So it's, I want to applaud staff for embracing this new area, but also have impressed upon the legislature on how on taking on another unfunded mandate and our concern about being able to do the work of the state bar in a timely manner. All right, any other questions for Ms. Wilson? Seeing none, we will go on to our consent agenda. This is item fifty. Are there any members who wish to pull any items off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, I may have a motion.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, first by trustee Tony, second by trustee Stevens. I have a real call vote, please.
Vera Hona.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Chen, not present. Sisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Huser.
Aye.
Shelby.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Soell.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
Thank you, that concludes item fifty. We're going to move next to our closed session agenda items. And I think it'll take about an hour for us to get through the items that we don't have scheduling issues on. So what I would propose doing is taking a recess now. Trustees, grab some lunch for those of you who are appearing remotely. Hopefully, would fifteen minutes allow you enough time to get some food and come back to the meeting in order to get through the closed session items? Okay. All right, so we'll take a brief recess, then, once we go into closed session, we'll grab some food. I would anticipate that we'll come out of closed session at approximately one fifteen PM this afternoon. The, we're going into closed session pursuant to business and professions code six zero two six point seven and six zero eight six point one subsection C and government code sections one 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 two six sub A sub one, one 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 two six sub C sub two, and one 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 two six sub E sub two, sub B sub I. And so we will move to closed session to consider those items listed on the closed session agenda. Trustees who will be appearing via Zoom, you should have a link that's been sent to you for that closed session item. So for the members of the public, we'll see you back at approximately one fifteen PM this afternoon. Thank you.
Okay, we're now recording.
All right, welcome back to the open session of the March twenty twenty-four Board of Trustees meeting. We have adjourned out of closed session. We do have one other item to take up on closed session tomorrow morning at nine o'clock due to scheduling issues. And there are no reportable actions out of closed session at this point. Going to go to the next item on our open session agenda, which is item seven zero one. This is approval of legislative reports required pursuant to business and professions codes six zero eight six point two zero and six one four five point one. Believe that we have Leah Wilson as well as George Cardona making a presentation on that. So if I could have our presenters get ready.
All right, so Louise, if you could pull up the. I asked Ursula and Donna to come up for the discussion, too. Okay, we can go forward. So today, I wanted to just give kind of an overview, and we were, we did post this this morning if folks want to access this from their laptops, an overview of what we're going to cover today. First, we're going to have George update you on the changes or the additions he's made to the diversion program report that is also due to the legislature April one. And then I am going to go into kind of a similar update conversation on the fee increase request because we've had two meetings where we've discussed it already in some detail. So I'm really focusing my, the presentation part of this on the updates. And then third, we're going to ask the board to approve, in effect, three reports, not in effect, to approve three reports. The diversion program report, the case processing standards report, which I am, there's not any presentation on today. You had a presentation on that from Yuen Jiang, I think, two meetings ago, and there have not been substantive changes. And then the fee increase report. With respect to the diversion and case processing standards reports, we're asking for the board to authorize staff to make technical corrections or amendments prior to the April first submission. With respect to the fee increase report, I'm asking that the board delegate to the chairs of the board and the finance committee the authority to work with staff to finalize that report because there will likely be more than just technical amendments needed on the fee increase report. So that's what we're going to cover. And with that, I'm going to kick things over to George to update you on the changes that he's made to the diversion program report.
So the diversion report is included in the agenda materials. And if we, if you want to turn to pages fifteen and sixteen of that, if you want to pull it up, and I think I can ask to put that up on the screen. Basically, the substance of the report remains the same. It goes through the three programs we're proposing. It talks about diversion. And then it addresses three different sets of rules, its potential models for codifying a diversion program. It looks in particular at the rules in Illinois and the District of Columbia and the ABA model rules for lawyer discipline enforcement. Then based on that, coming back from the last meeting, I had indicated that I would come back to you with recommendations for the actual legislative proposal that included, among other things, potential criteria for eligibility so that you could see those and see whether you agreed with those. And so if you turn to pages fifteen and sixteen of the report, and if we can put that up on the screen, that'd be great. So if you scroll up on page fifteen, up towards the top of the page, there we go, right there. So basically, the proposed legislative language has these portions. A, it's basically a directive to the board to establish a diversion program. Then section B sets out proposed eligibility criteria. And what I've done in accordance with the discussion last time was trying to find some baseline limitations that would serve as eligibility exclusions, with the understanding that we would then retain discretion to set guidelines for the diversion program around that. So in particular, what we've, what I've specified here is basically granting the chief trial counsel and lawyers can agree to diversion. If we, the office concludes based on all the circumstances, including consideration of the history of prior discipline, prior complaints, prior participation in the diversion program, that diversion would benefit and not harm the public, the profession, or the administration of justice. So that's the general criteria. And then it specifies diversion shall not be available and sets out these as the criteria where there's been significant prejudice to a client or another person, intentional misappropriation of funds or property of a client or third party, a criminal act that reflects adversely on the attorney's honesty, actual loss to a client or other person unless restitution is made a condition of diversion or dishonesty, fraud, deceit, or intentional misrepresentation. So those would be kind of the baseline exclusions. Individuals would not be eligible for diversion if they had one of those. And that's very similar to the criteria that are used in Illinois, the District of Columbia, and in the model rules. So that's the eligibility criteria. It then makes clear that the chief trial counsel will have discretion to determine other eligibility criteria for identifying appropriate cases. Then subsection C, if we scroll down, specifies, and I've added this so that it's absolutely clear that we can include these types of conditions in a diversion program. So there's not a claim, you can't do that as part of diversion. And specifies some of the typical conditions that we might be interested in imposing, a law enforcement, law office practice management program, various courses of education, testing, evaluation, and treatment by the lawyer assistance program or a medical or psychological provider, depending on what the basis for the diversion is. Arbitration or mediation, including in particular, one of the things that we expect we'll be doing is ordering people to go to fee arbitration as a condition of diversion, an audit of the lawyer's financial accounts, and any other condition agreed to between us. So this specifies that those can all be conditions. Then in D, essentially leaves the procedures to the discretion of the Office of Chief Trial Counsel with some requirements. That is that diversion be voluntary, that a lawyer not be required to formally admit misconduct as a condition of receiving an offer of diversion, and that a diversion agreement shall be in writing and clearly specify both the conditions and the time period as kind of baseline conditions. Then makes clear that costs should be paid by the person participating, and then lays out what happens if there's a termination of diversion. I have not included any language regarding reporting requirements for, to impose reporting requirements on the diversion program. We already have the ability to report aggregate data, and so my thought was that better to just leave that to us to determine how to report and when and what we're going to report rather than having statutory language that mandates something. So that's basically the addition. And the adoption of the report would basically have this be the proposal that goes forward to the legislature for the codifying of the diversion program.
All right, great, thank you, George. Any questions about this? Yes, let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Cardona. I thought the proposal looked excellent, so thanks for all of your hard work on it. I had two questions, and I'm sorry if I missed it somewhere. If somebody is in diversion and then another complaint comes in against them in the disciplinary system, will they be bounced out of it automatically or, you know, what will that look like? In other words, if they otherwise qualified, but then something came up during the term of diversion that would make them not qualified, how would that work? And then my other question was, even though I get it's a total guess, just wondering, what percentage of your matters do you think might be eligible, keeping in mind these criteria?
So that's actually laid out in the fee request because one of the things that we do in the fee request is try to estimate the reduction in our caseload or the approximate, it wouldn't be a reduction, well, we've estimated that anywhere between ten to twenty percent of the matters we get would potentially be eligible for diversion. That doesn't mean that we'll see a ten to twenty percent reduction in our workload because obviously there still has to be work done on some of those cases. But we would expect that if ten to twenty percent of our cases are eligible for diversion and is set out in the fee agreement, we can expand our diversion pilot to actually handle all the cases that we would. We would expect that to basically have a function of reducing our overall work, overall work on those cases so that the resources that would otherwise be used for those cases could go to other cases. But that's our estimate, that roughly ten to twenty percent of our cases potentially would be eligible for diversion. And that was based on basically looking at a historical snapshot of cases with the types of eligibility criteria that we're using for the pilot program. As the first one, simply a complaint coming in wouldn't automatically bounce someone out because obviously a complaint is just allegations. What we have typically been doing in our diversion pilot is basically saying, one of the conditions of the diversion pilot is that during the period of diversion, you not get a complaint that moves forward to charging. In other words, we've reviewed it, we've determined that it should move forward to charging. If that happens, that would be a violation and you'd get kicked out of diversion. But absent that, a complaint coming in in and of itself wouldn't necessarily, although potentially depending on what the complaint was, if we looked at it and had concerns, obviously, that would be, depending on the particular facts, that might be something we'd look at.
Thank you, any other questions for George? I think just as a comment, this is, diversion is being used in more expanded ways in the criminal justice system. Certainly, we've had the passage of penal code section one zero zero one point three six, which relates to mental health diversion. And just based upon my personal experience as a prosecutor, diversion programs have been used quite successfully in, you know, lower lower complexity issues and where individuals need some guidance in how to not run afoul of these rules. So definitely support of the practical steps laid out in the agenda item. So thank you, George, for your work on this.
We'll have the resolution later as part of the group of resolutions. Okay, let's move on, we can pull the visny back up. So now we're going to talk about the fee increase. Go to the next slide, please. So to get to the punchline first, the request now totals a hundred and twenty-five dollars. You may recall that you authorized a maximum request amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. The number that you last saw, I believe, was a hundred and forty-six point dollars and fifty cents. And that included about fifteen dollars for IT. As you can see from the agenda item, IT, there is no longer a dollar amount associated with IT, which I'll talk about in a moment. And in addition, we've tweaked some of the other areas, particularly under increasing public protection. Tweak the numbers and they've come down. So we are now at a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Some of you have asked previously, you know, what do we need to sort of keep the lights on? That is the ninety-five dollars maintaining public protection. The additional thirty dollars increasing public protection is just that. It's enhancing our. It's enhancing our impact and our services and outcomes, but it is not money that we need to kind of keep the lights on. If you can go to the next slide, Luisa. So, I wanted to provide the detail on what this $125 looks like, as well as to give you the long-term view, that even though we're only at, I'm going to say only, a little bit facetiously, but we're only at $125 now, that number is going to grow to 157 by 2028. And that growth is really driven by the line OCTC case processing. You can see that the number essentially doubles at 2025 to 2026 to 2028, and that is because our recommendation has been to phase the requested funds for OCTC into over three years to account for the time that it will realistically take to onboard and train that many new staff. So, first, under the $95 maintaining public protection, you can see the components there. These have not changed since you last saw this. Lease obligations, our contractual obligations to our staff and for IT licenses. This is basic, the licenses we already have, cost escalation, so that's your merit increases, your COLAs, and those IT licenses. And then the third category under maintaining public protection is existing staffing levels. That is fun, those are the funds we need to support the eight percent vacancy rate we have now, as opposed to the 15 percent vacancy rate upon which other analyses of our funding need have been based. So that's $95 maintaining public protection. Increasing public protection, first and foremost, new positions. This funding request in total will generate 57 new positions for the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel. Those positions are associated with that office's ability to implement the SB 211 case processing standards, which is the subject of the third report that you'll be asked to approve today. Second, we have the diversion program. So you are asked today to approve the diversion program report, and this is the corresponding fee increase request. If this request is funded, we will be able to fully implement the array of diversion activity that is outlined in that report, not all of which is contemplated to happen under the auspices of the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel. The Complaint Review Unit, this is the Office of General Counsel's unit that handles the appeals of OCTC's decision to close complaints. We have an ongoing funding request there, associated with three new positions. The Client Trust Account Protection Program, I mentioned this earlier during the Executive Director's Report. This would fund compliance reviews and audits to augment the reporting that's currently happening under the CTAP program. And then you see this TBD for Modern and Safe Information Technology Infrastructure. Unfortunately, as this item was being prepared, I really was not in a position to provide the board with a specific number associated with our IT needs. You've heard big numbers thrown about previously, in excess of 17 million that I shared at one point. We continue to have consultants and others help us vet that number to ensure that whatever we ultimately put forward to the legislature is fully defensible, and so I'm just not prepared with a number for you today. If you can go forward, Luisa. One thing I wanted to highlight that we do call out in the report is that the diversion program pays for itself by 2026. We do try to highlight very clearly in multiple places, because we are submitting three reports at the same time, the relationship between the OCTC case processing standards request and diversion. If diversion is not funded, then the position count needed in OCTC would increase from 57 to 73, that's 16 positions. So you can see that by 2026, you save money with diversion, half a million in 2026, and that increases to 1.3 million in 2027, and that would be the permanent savings, because in 2027, all of the OCTC positions would be hired. So really trying to hit home the point that, as it should, diversion is cheaper, as it should be, and so this is something that I also wanted to highlight for the board. If you go forward here, also included in the report, and this is something that the board spoke to, or directed staff to include during our last discussion on the fee increase report, fee increase topic, we have in the report a recommendation that the legislature adopt an annual CPI adjustment, really speaking to the impact of the, this, of the current funding methodology, not just on the state bar but on licensees, recognizing that when you do not make incremental small adjustments over time, when those adjustments are finally made, they can be quite substantial. And so at $125, we're talking about a 25 percent fee increase, very difficult for certainly some segment of our licensees, and impossible for the state bar to plan around. So our proposal is that there would be an annual CPI adjustment automatically, and that if the bar wanted any funds in excess of that CPI, we would have to go through a process similar to what we're doing this year. So we'll see how that's received, but it's certainly contained in the report now. You can go forward. Another thing I wanted to highlight for the board, this was a source of a lot of conversation at our last meeting, this is the requirement that we submit our proposal in $25 prioritized increments. It's really difficult to do that, really difficult for me and Luisa to figure out how to create this image, and so between now and April 1st, it will go to a professional. That being said, the, these are the components of the fee increase request, so all those colored bars totaled $125. They're in priority order based on our staff recommendation, top to bottom, and you can see along that Y-axis, the $25 increments. So they do not hit neatly our categories, because our categories, very few of them, fit within a $25 bucket, but essentially, we're saying lease, contractual obligations to staff and our IT licenses, funding our existing staff, OCTC case processing and diversion. Again, those two are linked, and so they're going together. The Complaint Review Unit, and then the Client Trust Account Protection Program. I, let me see if there's anything. Okay, one last thing I want to highlight for you, and then open it up for discussion, sort of different in the report that's presented today from what you've seen previously. You could go to the next slide. We also talked about the ways in which the fees would be structured and assessed to licensees. I think the board determined that we would advance a new model for assessing fees based on practice sector. I personally am really excited about putting forward something so innovative. We got some direction from the board at our last meeting to break the corporate sector up into categories, and we've done that here, small, medium, and large. I, I think there was also a directive to, not to have any entity paying less tomorrow than they are today, so not to see any negative numbers in the change from current base fee column. And also, to try to avoid any entity or group paying more than a 100 percent fee increase. So with all those parameters, we've come up with what you see in the report and also on the screen. So we have anywhere from a zero to a 97 percent fee increase. The zero is for other, that our data tells us now is mostly comprised of retirees. We are making it very clear in the narrative of the report that if the legislature chooses to go in this direction, we absolutely need some leeway to really finalize and validate who's appropriately in what category. But right now, that's who's in the other at zero percent, and then you have small firms, solo practitioners and nonprofits with a 10 percent increase, and then that goes all the way up to a 97 percent increase for large corporations and large firms. So we were able to kind of do that analysis and make the distinctions, or achieve the policy objectives, I hope, that the board established for us. The only other thing I'd say on this slide is, we did hear the board give a directive to apply this new fee assessment structure to the entirety of the mandatory fees. That includes Client Security Fund and the Lawyer Assistance Program. We actually weren't able to do it, the math did not work out. Because we are not seeking a fee increase in those areas, the only way to achieve a revenue-neutral position on the Client Security Fund or the Lawyer Assistance Program funds was to make very significant reductions for some groups and increase quite significantly for others, and that just didn't seem to make sense to us. So in this model that we're recommending, CSF and LAP remain $54 for all licensees, or $50 of that 54. We don't apply the new methodology to those particular fees. So with that, I think I will open it up for discussion, maybe leave it up, Luisa, in case people want to pull, go back to different slides. So seeking the board's approval, right now of the $125, seeking your authority for me and staff to work with the Chair of the Board and the Chair of the Finance Committee to finalize all of the components of this request, but most especially the IT component. Welcome, discussion, feedback? Yes?
All right.
I just wanted to say, I thought this looked fantastic, and I don't know how you got the data on the small companies, big companies, but it was exactly what we asked you to do, and I, I thought this looked great, and so I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you.
Right, any other questions, comments? All right.
So...
Trustee Shelby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to be clear in terms of what this discussion is right now. This is a discussion around the 125 and advancing that?
It's the 125, it's basically the entirety of the draft report that was posted, so it includes the 125, it includes the $25 increments, that piece, the suggestion for the assessment model, the way in which the fees would be assessed, the CPI component, essentially all of the pieces that it kind of briefly touched on.
Okay. So I did not have the opportunity to participate, I believe, on March the 1st, in the very extensive conversation that you all had, and really, let me, let me first say, I really appreciate all the background and detail that was taken into this, and so, but playing the devil's advocate, because this is a world that I lived in for quite some time, as I look, and I'm going to focus my comments exclusively around this 125, as if, if someone were coming to me and asking me for a fee increase, as I began to break everything down, what I noticed was essentially, to keep the door, the doors open and to pay people, that's $95 essentially of the fee increase. But then, the balance of that is addressing OTC, diversion, CRU, and then the CTAP program. And so, the concern that I have is, I'm confident we're not going to, and I, I don't believe anyone here is disillusioned that we're going to get everything that we asked for in the 125. And so if there were a bare bones of what was needed, what would that number be and what would it entail? I guess that's my first question. And yes, let me, let me stop there, and then I will continue.
It would be $95, and I would say if our, if, you know, our backs were against the wall, it would be $95 minus the 39. The 39 is associated with the eight percent vacancy rate versus the 15. If we didn't get that funded, we would have to immediately begin a hiring freeze. We put in the report that, based on the natural attrition pattern that exists today, it would take us 15 months to achieve that attrition level. So we'd have to use reserves and other means to meet payroll during that attriting period. But it, it is $95, and then again, you know, depending on, on the outcome of these negotiations, if it, if it got less than that, we'd have to take some pretty draconian measures in terms of trying to get our vacancy rate up.
Thank you for that. And so essentially, what we're asking to do is keep our doors open and keep staff, and keep people in the organization.
For $95, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'll come back and join the conversation, but I, I wanted that to, to sort of be clear.
Trustee Stevens, did I see your hand over there? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Trustee, oh, sorry, I think I saw Trustee Trejo first. Trustee Trejo?
Hey, how's it going, everyone? I just want to say that this is really comprehensive. I think it certainly addresses many of my issues regarding our expenses moving forward. I see it's exhaustive, so I commend you guys for doing the work, and anything we can do to help this forward. So, I'm going to agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Trejo. Trustee Tony?
You have the page that I was going to ask about. So, while we're not voting today, or we're not, you know, voting on future requests, we're just complying with a request that we give some back-of-the-envelope numbers as to what our budget may look like in the next few years, right? Next three years. We, one of the things we're going to have to think about is, today, we can use legitimately the rationale about the rate of inflation, and that we haven't kept up, and that we've fallen behind. I'm just going to suggest that '26, '27, '28, we may no longer have that with these numbers. So I just want us to think about it. I, while I was one of the people that had the position that we should ask for what we need, even though it was over the 150, I support the 125 that we have here, understanding that there's likely to be at least some figure for information technology by the time this is actually submitted.
All right, thank you for that. Anybody else wish to weigh in before we go to the resolution? Luisa, can we put up the resolution? All right, the resolution is up on the screen. Give everybody another couple moments to review it. All right, and if there's no further discussion or questions, may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Can I, can I second with a comment?
Absolutely. Okay. Here we have a first by Trustee Buena Ventura, a second by Trustee Stevens.
Just an idea about how to give the legislature something to work within those $25 increments. If you add essentially a side graphic that shows in $25 increments which mission bucket each of those fit into, you might hit that $25 increments number, right? So it might be $50, or, or $90, or $100, excuse me, that goes to protection of the public, or similar, right? So just, I, I would just suggest play around with that and see if you hit something that's meaningful and it meets what was requested.
Okay.
Good feedback. All right, there has been a first and a second. Any other discussion before I take a roll call vote? Any other comments? All right, seeing none? I have a roll call vote, please.
Barahona?
Hi.
Buena Ventura?
Hi.
Aye.
Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Thank you. Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
If I could just take one moment, Chair, I just want to, I should have started with this. Thank the staff that have been working on this. It is so much more than me and more than the folks that you always see coming to the table, although including the three people that you've seen there have been working and our General Counsel and Luisa, just a tremendous amount of hours on this fee increase report, but a lot of people that you don't see. And I just want to recognize them. I sent, I think, a team's thank you message out when we got this posted. I think there were 19 staff on there that have been working hand-in-hand with me to get this done. And I just want to give my appreciation. We're not quite there to the finish line, but really want to recognize what a team effort this has been and thank the board for your leadership as well.
Absolutely. No, and kind of stole the words from my mouth as far as my gratitude towards the staff. I know just in our weekly meetings, I hear about the sacrifices, the personal sacrifices that staff members are making in order to provide this information to the legislature. And I know that you and your team have been working exceptionally diligently. So thank you for all the sacrifices we don't even know about. And thank you to the board as well. This was, I think, really a product of multiple meetings, some intense discussions that I think is going to yield organizational health going forward. And I'm really encouraged by the direction that we're taking as a board and that staff is taking in order to make sure that we have the most efficient discipline system possible and can present that and make that case to the legislature. So thank you to all who are involved. And I think most importantly, let's take a bio break until about 2:10, and we'll come back into open session at 2:10. Yeah, we'll come back into RAD. Thank you. Moving on to the Board of Trustees' agenda, we are moving right along. Item 60-1, this is the Board of Trustees sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee, and her first item is a report on random audit of the Office of Chief Trial Counsel files resolved between March 1st, 2022, and August 31st, 2022. We are joined by our Chief Trial Counsel, George Cardona. Welcome, welcome back.
Thank you. So this is one of our standard periodic reports as we get in audits from the random audit that is done on groups of files every six months. We are slowly catching up, so now we are up to files that were closed between March 1st, 2022, and August 31st, 2022. The hope is that sometime in the next year, we will actually catch up and be where we are so that we are auditing files that are more recent to the current point in time. There are a couple of things I just wanted to highlight. The report, the agenda item I gave you lays out, in essence, the recommendations of the auditor, a couple of things to highlight. One, first, one of the things that the auditor does is go through and identify if there are files that they believe should be reopened. In other words, that they believe were closed and shouldn't have been for a variety of reasons. In this case, in line with the findings in prior audits, and I've laid those results out for you, they found that we should, they recommended that we reopen 12 files. That's 4.7% of the audited files, and that's in line with the numbers over the most recent audits. So in essence, that is a check on the quality of our closures, of our closure decisions, and it's within kind of the standard percentage that we see over a long period of audits. The second thing I wanted to highlight was there's a discussion of investigation delays in the audit report, and this was based on their review of 86 investigation files. And one of the things they noted was a significant issue with investigations delays and especially unexplained delays. And they noted it was not unusual to see straightforward complaints sit for months with no activity and no explanations in the files as to why. This is obviously a concern to us. It's tied into our regular reports on the metrics. And one of the things that we've seen in those metrics is the increase in the pending cases that are already in backlog. That fits with this observation by the random auditor. I've tried to outline some of the things we've done to try and address that. And as I note in the report, we've basically done a reorganization in July, effective July 1st of last year, that was tweaked January 1st of 2024 to try and move to a structure that in line with recommendations from the State Auditor and Legislative Analyst Office, we hope will enable us to move files more quickly. The second thing we've done is we've internally set for this year a target of trying to reduce our outstanding inventory by 15% by the end of the year by focusing our resources on trying to close and in particular, trying to go back and identify many of our older cases that are appropriate for closure. We'll be reporting to the disciplinary liaisons on a regular basis on our compliance with that target and hope by the end of 2024 to come in and hopefully be in a position where we've met that target and worked down the pending backlog and worked down in particular some of the older cases in our pending backlog. So those were kind of the two things I wanted to highlight from the report. The rest is laid out in the agenda item. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cardona. Any questions? Yes, Trustee Stevens?
Just quickly, on the identification of culpability, there were issues related to that that I think are noteworthy. Are the investigators working from some kind of a check sheet that requires them to say, you know, on their investigation, they've looked at that agreement, they've crossed off X, Y, and Z data points?
We don't have a specific checklist. What we have done is we've moved to a system where the majority of our investigations are now using a series of expedited investigation techniques that require not just the investigator, but the legal advisor, so the attorney who is assigned to the investigator to meet with the investig- the attorney who is assigned as the legal advisor for the investigation to meet at a very early stage with the investigator and identify the things that need to be done before a decision is made to close the case. Our experience has been that that works better than a checklist because it forces the attorney and investigator to actually sit down and talk about the case at an early stage and identify what needs to be done.
Yes, Trustee Tony?
I want to point to page nine of 17. And this is the section where it talks about the audit identifying some deficiencies. And what I really appreciate about this is the clarity in which George talked about each of the issues that the auditors identified, and most importantly, the remedy, the corrective action that has already been implemented for warning letters and conditional warning letters, interactions with complaining witnesses and closing letters, and legal and procedural issues. This is so much progress than in past years when we would see audit findings and see a rationale as to why and defensiveness, but a real acceptance of these are the audit results, and here's the steps I have taken. I just want to commend that and point that out specifically that I think it is the best practice.
Thank you for that comment. Any other questions? All right, seeing none?
There is no resolution. This is just an informational item.
Great, thank you for that information and for keeping us up to date on just how we continue to improve the quality of our investigations and how that's reported out to the public. So thank you for that. Moving on to six, item 60-2, this is our report on random audit of the Special Deputy Trial Counsel files, closed between June 1, 2022, and May 31st, 2023, and the Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator response. We are joined by Special Deputy Trial Counsel, Stacia Laguna.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Hi. I understand that there are some newer board members, so I just briefly wanted to give a little bit of background about what the Rule 2201 program is. This is a group of attorneys that handle cases where OCTC has a conflict in handling it. The procedures and the circumstances getting rise to that are in Rule 2201 of the Rules of Procedure, so you may hear it referred to as the Rule 2201 program. Right now, we have about 25 attorneys on the panel. They are a mix of practitioners, but they have significant experience. We have some civil practitioners that are legal experts or a legal malpractice practice. We also have some former prosecutors that are now in private practice. And we also have a core group of retired OCTC attorneys or semi-retired that do this as continued service to the bar. Cases in our program are assigned on the availability of the attorney, which is a little bit different than OCTC where they would be assigning equitably to full-time staff. So we have some deputies that like to stay very busy with this work, whereas others may not have any cases at any given time or may handle one at a time. So that's just the background on our program for folks that may not be familiar. And turning towards the random audit results, this is the first audit of its kind for the Rule 2201 program. In the past, the Rule 2201 files have just been audited as part of the OCTC audit, which is the biannual audit. Last year, we put into place a policy directive that sets forth the procedures for this type of audit for Rule 2201 files only. It differs from OCTC because it's annual rather than twice annually. And the reason for that is we have a much, much smaller inventory than OCTC. They have thousands of cases at a time, whereas our caseload is 60, maybe up to 100 at a very busy time. This is for the time period for June 1, 2022, which is the day I started in the role as administrator. And it went the calendar year thereafter, May 31 of '23. Highlights from our audit is that all closing decisions by special deputies were deemed appropriate and no reopenings were recommended. The auditors also had some complimentary words for the special deputies on the thoroughness of their work, which we appreciate. That said, the auditors did have comments on each of the 32 files that were audited. One area of concern for them was the completeness of the information in the Odyssey Case Management System. One point I want to highlight with that is that while the audit was confined to the four corners of Odyssey, so to speak, not all special deputies use Odyssey and their introduction to Odyssey is new. When I started on June 1 of '22, only the prior administrator had Odyssey access, and then I would have been the second person in the program to have access. So starting in the fall of '22, we started rolling it out to SDCs who are particularly busy with this type of work and any new oncoming SDCs. And then that effort continued into 2023. Right now, about half of the panel uses Odyssey. While it's only half, it represents 90 to 95% of the caseload are the folks working in Odyssey. So given the timeframe for the audit, June 1, where only the prior administrator had Odyssey access at that point, many files probably had a physical component that the auditors didn't see. We have had some training in maintaining Odyssey files consistent with the practices of OCTC. That took place at the end of the audit period, so that was in May of 2023. So we're hoping to see in the next audit, more consistent, a finding of more consistent results with OCTC practices and policies with file maintenance. Another idea I have in the works for this year is case closure checklist. So that would be where the SDC can refer to a checklist. And when closing up the Odyssey file, make sure that they have everything that's required in the file in the event that that file is pulled for audit. Another point for the auditors was the conflicts of interest checks. In practice, we've always done conflicts of interest checks before assignments were made, but they were not always documented in the file. So last year, I implemented a policy directive that outlines the procedures for conflicts of interest checks and how those are to be documented in the file. For those that are Odyssey users, they use a practice that is similar to OCTC where they enter a case event. For those who are not Odyssey users, they sign a certification certifying that they don't have any conflicts at the time of assignment and then at the different checkpoints after consistent with OCTC practices. The auditors had two items that they highlighted where they thought there could be additional support for special deputies. One was roundtable discussions for complex cases or cases going to trial. In practice, we do confer about cases, and SDCs always check in with me, especially about those matters that are going to be litigated. That said, though, we welcome the suggestion that this should be mandated, and so that's planned for a policy directive later this year. The auditors also recommended investigator support. Unlike OCTC, SDCs wear both hats of investigator and prosecutor. And in those instances, there are times where you could run the risk of becoming a witness in your own case, and it would be beneficial to have an investigator. This fall, we use an investigator on a particular case to locate and interview some witnesses. And now with the assistance of the Office of General Counsel, we have a contract with that particular investigator for future needs. That person is located in Southern California, so my goal for the upcoming quarter is to find somebody in Northern California for any needs that may arise in that geographical area. They had three training recommendations. One was a training on common OCTC policies. I agree that that would be beneficial for the special deputies to have. I'm going to have an experienced OCTC veteran take on that project and lead that training. Likewise, they recommended training on consideration of complaint history, and I plan to incorporate that with the policy training. They also recommended training on Odyssey maintenance for the files. And like I said, we did have a training on that last May at the end of the audit period, and that training remains available for the SDCs to review on our training portal in Microsoft Teams. Those were the highlights from the audit, and we appreciate the work of the auditors and their recommendations on areas where we can improve. With that, I'll take any questions the trustees may have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Laguna. Any questions? I'm sorry, I can't see any of the other trustees. If we could switch that view?
Trustee Huser's camera is off, and Trustee Hanato, and so I'll have to step out.
Got it, okay. All right, any other questions? All right, Stacia, thank you for that presentation. As always, if you need any support, financial otherwise, please let us know. Definitely support the work of the 2201 program, its continued professionalization. And so, me personally, I'm so happy with the steps taken to professionalize the system. I know it was a work that was started a while ago before you were in this role, but really happy with the steps that you've taken to, especially in the area of the Case Management System, to have continuity there. So thank you for your continued work in this.
Thank you.
All right, moving next to item 60-3, this is a discussion regarding Rule 2201 program, performance metrics. And again, this is by Ms. Stacia Laguna, our Special Deputy Trial Counsel.
Yes, this is the Performance Metrics Dashboard. Trustees may have seen this from me in the past or from Mr. Cardona in the past on OCTC's metrics. So it may look familiar. As a reminder on these, in general, blue numbers represent data that is good for us, trending in a positive direction. Red is trending in a negative direction, but, you know, sometimes that can be explained or provided some more context to it. So I'll get into our- So I'll get into our dashboard. This is our basic KPI. It's based off of when the case came from OCTC to us, not the overall age of the case. Our case inventory right now is six, or I'm sorry, this is for Q4. So Q4 was 67. The caseload clearance rate was 119%. So as a refresher, it refers to the number of cases coming in versus the cases that are reaching a disposition. So if you have 100% there, for every one case that is being referred, we're reaching a disposition in another. So this represents that we're making dispositions in more cases than we're being referred. So that's a positive for us. SDTC reopens for reasons other than new evidence was zero. That's our internal crew function where a complaining witness can ask for a second look. We had no recommendations to reopen on our second looks by independent special deputies. And as we just went over for the random audit, no recommendations to reopen any of those cases that were pulled for audit. You'll notice that the entire bottom row is red, so not great data for us. I do know that we've got a few very old cases. They have an 18 case number. There were about 10 of those when I came on. We've reached dispositions in four of them, two of which were in Q4 of last year, and we've still got those six outstanding that are being worked on. So given that our case inventory is so small, we're really at risk for these large swings when we have outliers like these. So you'll see here, we have 416 days for average days spent in investigation for non-complex, 253 for complex. Those are definitely not acceptable numbers. I'm hoping that we can reach a disposition in those very, very old matters I was referring to, either, you know, Q1 is coming to an end, but hopefully in Q2. These are average days to close. Red numbers again, and showing red compared to the target dates you can see down here. So we are working on our backlog, but it's there. Finally, percent of cases closed within target. The target for complex and non-complex is both 90%. We've got 69% and 55%, so still the majority are being closed within target, but not the target rate of 90%. This page is all about backlog. Right now, we've got 45 cases, or Q4, 45 open cases in backlog. It's shown in blue because last year it was, in 2022, it was 49. 67% is what's represented there. Because we have the smaller inventory, although the core number is smaller, it represents a higher percentage of the overall inventory. Looking below, you can see the percent of open cases in backlog over time. You'll see that there was a big spike in that in Q3 last year, trending downward in Q4. An analyst in MAD was able to pull the data for January and February of this year and confirm with me that we're still trending downward. It's 64% for the end of February. So although not a great statistic for us right now, it seems we're moving in the right direction. Cases closed in backlog status for 2023, 45 and 34% of the inventory. It's shown in red because they're backlog cases and we, the target is 10%. I kind of look at this two ways, though. You know, on one hand, they're old cases, right? But we're also reaching dispositions in them, so that's a more positive spin on looking at this data. And here we have the percentage over time. Cases closed and case closure rate. So comparing the bottom graph to the top graph, we had 42 cases incoming, 50 that reached dispositions, and that's where you get the 119% rate. Here we have case age at closure. This really depicts what I was referring to with how we're subject to swings based on outliers. The blue is the average, and the purple is the median, and I was able to, in the interactive dashboard, you can hover and get the exact numbers. So our average case rate, age at closure, was 161. The median was 66 days. Bottom right is the breakdown by age. We have 22 cases less than six months, 18 between six months and a year, 27 older than a year. This is cases passing through each phase, so just taking the left side of the page first. We had 47 cases that passed through intake, 14 that passed through investigation, and three cases that were filed, two respondents, three cases. So there was one standalone case and then a second respondent where there were two separate client matters that were charged. The right side is duration in each phase. So the intake average for Q4 was 101. I'm aware that we had some cases that got old in intake status. The median was 66. The investigation average was 349, but the median was 185. And the charging, both the median and average were the same with 147 days. This is just a different depiction of what was on the first page with the KPI, so this is showing no reopen for reasons other than new evidence and no random audit reopen recommended. With that, I'll take any questions from the trustees.
All right, thank you, Stacia. All right, seeing none, thank you for that report and for the data, which I'm sure we are all still chewing on. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Item 604. This is Proposed Amendments to the Standards for Attorney Sanctions for Professional Misconduct Relating to the Effect of Prior Discipline. This is Standard 1.8, and this is a request to circulate for public comment. This item is being presented by Staff Attorney Kathy Scher, so welcome, welcome, Scher. Thank you for being here. Oh, you're still on mute.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Let me see if I can share my screen and show the presentation. Just a second.
Kathy, let us know if you'd like us to share. Okay.
Okay, I think I'm good. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes, great, terrific. So good afternoon. I'm Kathy Scher. I'm Project's attorney with the State Bar Court, and I'm here today to talk to you about the proposed amendments to Standard 1.8 of the Standards for Attorney Sanctions for Professional Misconduct Regarding Progressive Discipline. This proposal comes out of the work of the Ad-Hoc Commission on Discipline. The proposed changes will give the State Bar Court greater judicial discretion and help stop the perpetuation of racial disparities in the discipline system. I will be giving a quick overview of the policy of progressive discipline and the problems that arise from its inflexible application, explain the existing rule, and then go through the specifics of the proposed changes. Whoops. Hold on just a second. I skipped a slide that I didn't mean to skip. Progressive discipline is a policy that requires when an attorney has a prior disciplinary record and is again found culpable of misconduct, the discipline imposed for the current misconduct should be more severe than the discipline imposed for the previous misconduct. The reason behind this policy is that if someone has been previously disciplined and yet continues to engage in misconduct, more severe sanctions are considered necessary to ensure good conduct in the future. The problem with applying this policy arises because we know that in the past, there were racial disparities as to the discipline imposed. When that is true, requiring that the current sanctions be more severe than the previous sanctions results in the perpetuation of those racial disparities. The Ad-Hoc Commission on Discipline examined this problem and proposed that the standards be modified to give the State Bar Court greater discretion as to the imposition of progressive The existing language of Standard 1.8, shown on the left of this slide, is inflexible, stating that a more severe sanction must be imposed and requiring that the prior misconduct be both remote in time and not serious for an exception to be made. The Supreme Court has consistently interpreted this provision as requiring progressive discipline unless a case fits within the narrow exception allowed. The proposed changes will change must to should, allow flexibility when the previous misconduct was either remote in time or not serious, and will allow for consideration of other factors, including the seriousness of the current misconduct. Finally, the proposed language ensures transparency by requiring the State Bar Court to state its reasons if progressive discipline is not imposed. So here's what the language looks like with the proposed changes. The proposed language gives the court greater discretion and still holds to the policy of progressive discipline and requires the stated reason when that policy is not followed. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Keeping in mind, this is a request to circulate for public comment. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, trustee Buena Ventura.
Could I ask, what was the discussion of the committee on using? So when I hear must and I hear should, that's sort of saying kind of must. How about me? Was there a discussion on saying instead of should, may impose?
So this, there was discussion of that in the working group of the Ad-Hoc Commission that discussed progressive discipline. It was then kind of delegated to staff and in this case to a working group of State Bar Court judges and attorneys to figure out the best implementing language. And I think there was some, there was discussion of may, but the working group was trying to hit a balance between the rule still stating that progressive discipline is the policy and should be imposed in most cases, you know, but while still allowing for greater discretion when there are factors that mitigate against imposing progressive discipline. So yes, there was consideration, but the decision was, as represented in this language, to kind of hit that balance, that the understanding is progressive discipline is still the policy that should be followed in most cases.
Yes, trustee, good.
Thank you, Ms. Scher. I think the questions you're getting from trustee Buena Ventura and myself are because we both served on the Progressive Discipline Working Group, and it's a really tough issue. And must versus should doesn't feel like a really material change to me either. My question is also, you know, as you know from the Ad-Hoc Commission's work and the prior reports that were done, you know, it showed really gross racial disparities in the attorney discipline system in California. And I'm wondering if, let's say, an attorney comes before the court with a current disciplinary issue and has a couple in the past that fell within that window when work was done that suggested that, for example, black attorneys were disproportionately targeted. Would that be a mitigating circumstance that that person could bring up to the State Bar Court to advocate that progressive discipline should not be imposed? In other words, does that fall under, or quote, "There are other circumstances that would make imposing greater discipline unjust," close quote?
That, I think that is exactly the purpose of that language, is to allow the court to look at all of the circumstances that might make imposition of progressive discipline unjust in this case.
Okay, so I guess we would anticipate that that would come up for anybody who had discipline imposed during that period of time that was kind of studied, right? Okay.
Right, correct.
Okay. I know we're just sending this out for public comment, but I am troubled by the should language. I feel like it's semantics and it's the same. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
I just feel I would be remiss in not channeling our Chief Trial Counsel, just to clarify. I don't think it's accurate to say black attorneys were targeted. Trustee, good. I do think it's very clear that there was disparate disciplinary outcomes, and we did identify reasons why, but I'd just like to clarify that. Thanks.
That's fair. Yeah, I misspoke. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion? Actually, thank you for putting the resolution up on the screen.
I move to put up for public comment. Put out.
All right, first by trustee Tony. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by trustee Stevens. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen, not present. Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby? Oh, trustee Shelby stepped out. Stevens?
Aye.
Soell? Trustee Soell stepped out. Tony?
Aye.
Trejo? Trustee Trejo stepped out. And Stallings? Eight ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scher. Okay, moving on to our miscellaneous calendar. This is Item 702. This is an update on legislation and adoption of affirmative legislative proposals, joined by Donna Herschgewitz and Bridget Grammy. Okay, yeah, just so the record's clear, we are out of the Board of Trustees sitting as a Regulation and Discipline Committee. We're now putting on our other hat of the Regular Board meeting agendas, so this is Item 700 on that Regular Board meeting agenda. Does Herschgewitz take this away?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members. Luisa Alfredo, if I could have the very skimpy PowerPoint presentation? Thank you. In January of this past year, Bridget and I presented for you the first set of affirmative legislative proposals for your adoption. At the time, we mentioned we would be returning later this year as we developed additional proposals further. So here we are today. Your agenda item notes a number of affirmative legislative proposals, as well as providing an update on some existing legislation, which has now been adopted, which reflects a couple of the affirmative proposals that were, this board has approved previously. After we go through our presentation today, we're going to ask you to adopt the list of affirmative legislative proposals in your agenda item today. And this clicker is probably not on. Thank you. It was not on. So I'm not planning on going through, in this presentation, all of the proposals that are listed, but this slide and the next identify the affirmative legislative proposals, which are already in legislation, as well as the full list of affirmative legislative proposals that are contained in your agenda item today that we're asking you to adopt. We are going to focus just on three of these proposals, but we wanted to put up the list here for you. Obviously, at the end, at any time during the presentation, we're happy to take questions on the items that we have decided to highlight, as well as any of these other items which are included in your agenda item today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bridget Grammy to talk first about one of the affirmative legislative proposals within the Access to Justice category.
Thank you, Donna. So yes, this, this one that we wanted to highlight, this first one here is, is proposing to amend Business and Professions Code Section 6033. That, that provision authorizes the bar to collect voluntary donations to nonprofit legal services organizations, and it provides that those funds should be combined with IOTA revenues and distributed according to a set IOTA formula. And so this, this proposal would allow the bar to seek a legislative amendment that would give us more flexibility, actually, the Legal Services Trust Fund Commission to, to distribute those specific funds that we receive in voluntary donations to more, like, important emerging issues that are outside of the traditional fund cycle, such as disaster relief services, that type of thing. And this is also something that we would be proposing in partnership with the Legal Aid Association, California. And then the next one I wanted to highlight has to do with the non-JD programs at non-law schools. This one, you heard some public comment from and, and received, you might have received some written comments about this item as well, so I wanted to clarify a little bit. We've amended the resolution that you'll see in a moment to make it a little bit more clear about what we're seeking here. So these, this seeks amendments of two provisions, 6060.7 and 6046.7, as they relate to the scope of the Committee of Bar Examiners oversight. We put more details in the item, but basically, the, back in 2006, there was a bill that transferred the oversight of the regulation of unaccredited law schools from the Bureau of Private Post-Secondary and Vocational Education to the Committee of Bar Examiners. And in the midst of that, that, that bill, there was some language in there that also gave oversight over law study programs at non-law schools to the committee. Nothing has ever come up about it, and, and there has never been a, any kind of rules or mechanism for approval of those types of programs of non-law studies. But they have kind of emerged in the time since 2006, these like executive JD programs, for example, where the graduates would not be entitled to sit for the bar exam or ever become future licensees of the state bar. And so while there's no actual approval pending right now before the Committee of Bar Examiners, staff is proposing that we amend that statute to clarify that the Committee of Bar Examiners really only has oversight over accredited and registered unaccredited law schools that are not approved by the ABA and not extending to non-law schools. And so we would work with the Committee of Bar Examiners and, you know, any of the people that had made comments, just to clarify what that language would be. But that is, the Committee of Bar Examiners did talk about it last week at their meeting, and they generally concur with this, with staff's recommendation on this. Donna?
And the final item that we wanted to highlight for you today in the operational and budgetary efficiencies category is a plan to simplify the process for dealing with attorney oath cards. For those of you who are not familiar, after you have passed your bar exam, gotten your, gotten a positive moral character determination, and met all of the other admissions requirements, the very last thing for you to do is to get sworn in to the bar. In the past, some of you may have actually sworn some applicants in. That's actually no longer possible. The, we have made some improvements to the process in the past few years, including adopting DocuSign, so that both the, the individual being sworn in, as well as the third-party officiant that is required by statute, can sign electronically. That helps our processing of these cases because for, among other things, we can read the signatures, and we can have information that we need in order to validate the processing. There are some questions, frankly, that some of us have about the need for a third-party officiant, and whether that is something that needs to continue. But what we are starting with right now is proposing an amendment that deals with the process for people who are getting sworn in by judges in another state. If you're getting sworn in by a judge in another state, you are required to put on the oath card the seal of the court and the signature of the clerk of court in addition to the judge who did the swearing in. This is often something that is missed. There may, in fact, not even be a spot on the oath card for that seal of the, of the court. It is not something that is required for people who get sworn in by a judge of this state, and the failure to have that information on the card delays the processing, causes issues for the, for the prospective attorney and processing difficulties for our staff. And so that's why we're proposing at least to start with this proposal to improve processing of those cards. And with that, we're happy to take any questions on three, these three items we highlighted or any of the other items in the agenda item.
Do you, Bridget and Donna, want to, just following on trustee Good's question earlier, just give a little update on, I forgot the number of the ADR proposal and how we've been working on that?
Certainly. So Senator Umberg has introduced Senate Bill 940, which proposes that the state bar would, that there would be a voluntary program where firms that do ADR services, alternative dispute resolution services, mediation arbitration in particular, would be able to get certified by the state bar. That's largely what's in the bill right now. It does, there is a provision, which we very much appreciated, Senator Umberg including, that provides that, first of all, it's a, the state bar may develop a program, is what the language currently says, and then it also says, if the state bar does develop such a program, then the state bar may charge the reasonable administrative costs of administering such a program. I have read probably the same articles that you have read, trustee Good, in the legal papers, where I see that Senator Umberg is thinking about future amendments to the bill. I have been working with his primary staff person on this to get an idea of Senator Umberg's purpose and goal, so we can provide necessary technical assistance and ultimately come to an understanding of, of what, what the bill will be doing. Because it is still in its formative stages, that is why we didn't put it on this agenda item, because there really wasn't much to tell you about exactly what it's going to do and how it's going to do it. And so I fully expect that I'll be providing you an update on the bill at the May meeting and asking for further direction or potentially a, a position that the bar would take on the bill at that time.
Trustee Tony?
I was curious about your thoughts on the letter and public comment we received today from Dean Park at Abraham Lincoln University. And the question of the word accredited versus regulated by the examining committee, and, you know, her request that the word unaccredited afterwards be replaced by regulated, what is your thought on that?
Bridget, did you want to take that? I couldn't.
Sure.
Necessary.
Yes, so, to answer your question, I, I wouldn't want to opine on that myself. I think that's something that we could talk about with the Committee of Bar Examiners on specific language. I think what Dean Park was referring to and, and some other written comment that we, staff has separately responded to the commenters on, was an attachment to the Committee of Bar Examiners item on this topic, which was an old proposal, an old statutory proposal in 2017, that did not end up moving forward. And we had attached that as some background and contextual information, but not anything that we're actually proposing right now. And so right now, we haven't actually drafted the language yet. We wanted to get the, the board's approval and concept for this proposal, and then we will work for sure with the committee and with stakeholders to make sure that the language encompasses what is intended, but as we move forward with the legislature.
I appreciate the clarification. I just wasn't quite sure.
No problem.
And let me, if I could just add, so that proposal in 2017, which is approved by the Committee of Bar Examiners and approved by this board, intentionally eliminated that terminology, because that was a proposal that was, that was seeking to advance elimination of unaccredited law schools. And so there would be mandatory accreditation of all the law schools. So that was a, that was the, the point of that legislation, and that's why that language was changed. That's not what we're currently looking at, and so that's why it's not relevant to this discussion.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, oh, all right. Okay. I'd make a horrible auction here, I'd probably be calling up people. Never bid. Okay. That's right. Trustee Stevens, do I hear a comment? No. Okay. Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, thank you, Ms. Herschgwis.
I will, I will point out that the, the red lines that you see on, on the screen are just, are some clarifications that we made after we posted the item, just, just for clarity's sake. So the one on the bottom, the one about 6060.7 is the clarification I talked about with respect to the unaccredited law schools. And then the one just above, we, we referenced the Justice Gap Fund revenue, but it's actually broader than that, so I just wanted to make sure that the resolution was very clear, that it's the donations that we receive that we're talking about as far as the 6033 amendment.
So would it be helpful then to spell that out? Okay.
That's what these are referring, sorry, that these red lines are the, are clarifications.
Got it. Yep, I was looking at the original one. Okay, perfect. Any other questions or comments based upon Ms. Grammy's additional information? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion?
I'll move, I'll move the item.
First by trustee Tony. Do I have a second? Second? Second by trustee Stevens. May I have a roll call vote?
Barahona?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen, not present. Sisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Huser?
Aye.
Shelby, not present. Stevens?
Aye.
Soell, not present. Tony?
Aye.
Trejo, not present. Stallings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Herschgwis and Ms. Grammy, for your continued work on this. We really do appreciate it. Going on to item 703, this is in regards to our 2022 to 2027 strategic plan. This is a review and approval of Goal Five and other modifications that were submitted to the board in January of this year. And we have Ms. Leah Wilson on that.
Yeah, and I think I asked that, I don't know if she's here, Elizabeth Nolan, who now staffs the Audit Committee and is my right hand on all things strategic and operational plan, to join us. So if you could put up the presentation, Luisa. So this is another item that we've, I've changed slightly from what is posted, based on late-breaking board feedback. So what, what you're asked to do today is to approve new Goal Five of your strategic plan. Right now, our strategic plan has four goals. At the January planning session, we discussed and the board directed at the development of a Goal Five that would be specifically focused on technology infrastructure, and so you have that before you today. In addition, in January, we posted a number of amendments. I, I would say they were technical or wording clarification-type amendments to the other four goals of the strategic plan. So you're asked to approve all of this today, understanding that since this is your first time seeing Goal Five, you may want to hold off on, on approval of that particular aspect of this item. If you can go forward. So this is Goal Five. I'll just give you a moment to take a look at it. The orange or the yellow is new, and this reflects input from a trustee wanting to specifically call out artificial intelligence. So I'll just pause here so you guys can take a look at the new goal. I'll advance the slide.
What does conducts risk and benefit analysis mean here?
Well, you know, it's specifically referring, in this instance, or a top of mind for me is AI. There are a number of AI use cases that we've identified throughout the organization now, and some that I would call extremely low risk, so we do this analysis, is things like using AI tools to help you edit non-confidential communication. A memo, an email, the confident, the communication itself is not confidential, you're using it sometimes to help you get started and sometimes to edit what you have. That's low risk. It could be high benefit to the individual, not necessarily high benefit to the organization. Something much more risky, but potentially much more impactful, is using AI tools to potentially do any of the analysis of disciplinary complaints. The benefits could be enormous, but the risks are significant as well. The risk of error, the risk of confidential information being disclosed. Another example is these AI chatbots, which we have been looking at a lot, when they are just harnessing information that's already publicly available on our website, that's low risk, high benefit. If they're accessing information that's in our discipline case management system, that's high risk. So that's what I mean, is really doing that kind of risk-benefit analysis to help us determine whether or not we want to try to pursue something. And of course, this doesn't apply solely to AI use cases, but that's what immediately comes to mind for me.
Well, my concern is having in your vision that somehow the state bar will either have the expertise and/or the ability to conduct risk assessments related to AI seems outside the scope of the state bar's remit or goals, and the rest of the goals on data management seem very broad. And this implies, as we've seen in the news, a, a much more, you know, high-risk and high-profile type of assessment of AI that I do not believe we have the expertise to do. So I would recommend we take out that clause, starting with conduct and ending in use.
Any comments from other trustees? Yes, trustee Tony?
I'm sure Chair Stallings has his microphone on, but I can't hear when you speak.
Sorry, I was a little bit removed from it. I called on trustee Tony, who has a comment.
I'm going to start off by appreciating that we have a draft to look at. I'm going to suggest that we do a little bit more work on it and bring it back in May, because I think that the, the question of artificial intelligence is, certainly didn't exist when we approved this strategic plan. And there, there's a couple of things. One is, we have the order, the executive order that Governor Newsom issued. that Governor Newsom issued on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three that has a timeline that he expects all state agencies to be involved in coming up with plans for AI. And, you know, part of what I want to see is that we, you know, that, that part of the language in here is that the state bar is committed to complying both with state, there, you know, President Biden also in, in, when was it? October thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three issued an executive order on safe, secure, and trustworthy AI. And so, and there's been, I think, a lot of really good work that's been put out. The UC Berkeley Labor Center, you know, has a guide to AI where they're suggesting that we look at, you know, organizations look, you know, have policies around electronic monitoring, algorithms, data privacy, bias and discrimination, biometric data. And so, so part of it is, I do think that the state bar as an agency should, and I'm not saying that this is part of this, but the goal, and it may also, I mean, so, so there's a couple of things. One is the internal use of AI and what our policies are going to be. But I, I also think we should be clear in, in that we also want to continue monitoring the use of AI by attorneys, the public protection issues. And then I also would like us to have some assessment of what are the increased risks of AI when it comes to security of our data and the websites and stuff like that. Because I know that, you know, these are things. We've had reports of people trying to hack our system, this, you know? And I worry that AI might make it easier. I don't know for a fact. So, so anyway, like I would be, I, I, I'm going to be clear here. I may not be crazy about AI, but I know I can't stop it. And so, but I do think that it's worth, you know, being in conversations and having something where we try to put up some guardrails. So I, I mean, I'm willing to work with anyone who wants to work with me to, on staff or on the trustees to, you know, not, not too much detail, but just enough to put, to, to make a proposal. Maybe someone who's a proponent of AI. So you have someone who's skeptical and someone who's a proponent to just come up with something that really makes it clear that as an agency, we're going to take our obligations seriously, both internally and externally.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Any other comments on this issue of AI that's been brought up? Yes, Trustee Good?
I'm, I like the language of the vision proposal and, you know, I'm prepared to adopt it with the change that Trustee Huza made because I think it gives us tons of flexibility. And AI is a huge topic and I don't think we're going to be able to get to the bottom of how to use it in a short amount of time. So I'm prepared to move forward with this, with Trustee Huza's modification. Thanks.
So just so the record's clear, Trustee Huza's modification would delete all of the yellow text?
No, delete conducts risks and benefit.
It would delete, just for the record, the phrase conducts risk and benefit analyses of potential use cases to ensure appropriate use.
Go ahead. I mean, I, I might push back a little bit on that. Just looking at the release regarding the executive order, it seems like the direction that the state of California is going is that we are to protect and prepare for potential harms. We're to continue to study the implementation of AI in use in, in a, you know, in local government. And I think if we take out that conducts risk and benefit analyses, then I think potentially we are not able to, to meet that, those ideals as laid out in the executive order.
Well, I just want to say a couple of things. I think a lot of what you're talking about, Trustee Tony, is appropriate for an operational plan or a different plan associated with AI implementation as opposed to our strategic plan. And I also say in terms certainly of the state initiative with, with which I'm more familiar than the federal one, there's a whole corresponding sandbox where innovation is being encouraged and is being tested at the state level. So while yes, there is a lot of language about looking at the risks, there's an active, and I'm surprised by this from a state government, but an active and impressive, proactive set of initiatives going on to try to test use cases. The first one they came out with was a franchise tax board customer service. They're now doing language access for their healthcare agency. They, they're constantly pushing out requests for innovative ideas is what they call it in a sandbox type of environment. So if we're going to try to mirror that ourselves, I, I, I just would say if we're going to try to mirror and replicate and sort of latch on to this executive order, we should do so in its entirety. It, it's a massive initiative at the state level that's being led by the GovOps agency. So I would say that. I would also say we are definitely testing out and trying AI throughout this organization. Many of our staff, we do have guidelines for use, particularly around confidential information. But we are, and I think that that train has left the station. I, I believe that we wouldn't be responsible stewards of our resources if we just weren't trying to use it at all. But I'm very open if the board wants to establish, and maybe it's you, Trustee Tony, and maybe you and another board member, a committee, an ad hoc committee of sorts, to work with staff because we are at the stage where we need to revisit our own interim internal guidelines. We need to update them. We need to propagate something a little more comprehensive. You know, I've asked the General Counsel to work with outside counsel that has expertise in this area to ensure that the agreements we have with AI providers are secure and appropriately protect our data. So that's all happening and, you know, we would be very happy to have members of the board participate in that, provide guidance on that. But I just really want to think about that as a perhaps a different initiative than our codification of this work in the strategic plan. So, you know, I'm, I'm just not sure how much of that has to go in the strategic plan is what I'm saying.
I would like to make a comment.
All right.
And that is that part of the challenge here is that the Board of Trustees has been presented with only one side of the AI discussion. And I objected to that at our last meeting in January, that it was not balanced. And it disturbs me greatly that as decision makers, we would make a decision only having heard one side of a two-sided debate. I think that that is not a sound way to make decisions. I, while I have issues with the way this is written, my request is that if we move this to the next meeting, I think we could come up with something where we could have consensus. Maybe I'm wrong on that. But I absolutely cannot vote on, I, I cannot support this the way it is written today. I believe there is no urgency to voting today. There is no deadline, statutory deadline we're going to miss if we move it two months from now. So I, I, I would ask consideration of that and if it goes to a vote, I will be voting no.
I guess our Trustee Stevens, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I was going to.